Is everybody ready to go?
Mayor, we're waiting for one more alder to sign in.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And now, we have 12 present in the room. You can go ahead.
Very good. Thanks, Clerk. I now call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, October 17, 2023. Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 present in the room and 12 voting in civic clerk.
Very good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Alder Bill Morgan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alder Morgan.
Tonight, I have asked a gentleman to come and do this for me. Him and I have been friends, helping celebrate and get people to smile around the Christmas season every year, as he's a owner of Great Scott Images. He's been a lifelong resident of Green Bay. I'm proud to say he's a Navy veteran, and he's the pastor at the Un Church. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott Eastman.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate the invitation to come, if you'll pray with me. Father God, Lord, I thank you for this group of people, Lord, that have given up, like, not just this Tuesday night, but like, how many Tuesday nights, Lord, that they've given up to, like, not be with their family and not be with their friends, but instead, because they love their city so much that they're here, giving their time. And so I thank you for the blessing that they are to our city, Lord God. Father, in this meeting, Lord, I pray that you grant them your wisdom, your wisdom to get to the bottom of the problems, rather than focusing on the differences, Lord, that they focus on the good of the city, Lord. Lord, I pray, Lord, that you extended them your grace, that they then take that and share their grace with other people, that they assume the best of the other alder people and the people that are speaking, Lord, that they assume not the worst of each other, but the best of each other, Lord. And Father, I pray that you give them your humility, that they're not here to be right, but they're here to do right, Lord God, that they love their city, that they love their people, Lord God, and that whether the constituents are the powerful or the poor, whether they're the rich or the homeless, whether they're Republican or Democrat or fancy neighborhoods or other neighborhoods, Lord God, that that doesn't matter, that it's the it's the good of the city that's on top of everyone's mind as they make their decisions today, Lord. Lord bless them, bless their decisions, and bless their lives because of the sacrifice that they made. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Pastor Eastman. And now, we are on to approval of the minutes. There's a motion by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any changes here? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The minutes are adopted. Approval of the agenda. A motion, was that made by Alder Eck?
Yes.
Seconded by Alder Scanell. Any changes here? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Report by the mayor. Well, first of all, I'm not with you, so I apologize for that, out at a conference in DC of fellow mayors from around the country and the world, and still hoping to bring back some good ideas and hopefully some money. As far as, you know, items for you, really just wanted to touch on our budget schedule, both for for you all and for residents of the community. I think you all should have received an invitation for a Budget Town Hall that we're conducting again over at Pedal Town on October 26 in the evening. And then, following that, we'll have a meeting of our, a joint meeting of our Personnel and Finance Committee November 2nd, and then November 9th, we'll have a budget meeting before our full common council. So I'll be sharing the budget book and my budget message very shortly with you all on common council and with the the community, certainly looking forward to to a good discussion again on on that. So with that being said, we will move along to announcements. And just, and noted the fact that I'm obviously running the meeting remotely here, it could be a little clunky at times, so if you could just bear with me and press your buttons, I'll be monitoring that as closely as possible. So now, we will move along to announcements from our council. And just give me a second. Any announcements from our council? Not seeing any here. So I will move along. No appointments before us tonight. Ordinance's second reading for adoption.
Second.
Was that a motion to suspend the rule?
No, no, I need to open the floor.
Oh, very good. Alder Scanell makes a motion to open the floor. That was seconded by? Alder Galvin? All right, all in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Floor's open. And then, for our residents, if you can just state your name and address, and we customarily allow for three minutes for testimony.
Mr. Kavanaugh? Yes, would you please come forward to the podium and say your name and address?
At the podium, right?
Yes.
Can I close this or does that stay open? This is Neil Kavanaugh. This is, I live at 1100 Linden Street on the corner of Linden and Mary. And this is in regards to the rezoning of Emmett Street, where they're proposing to put, from what I can gather, five homes down there. And personally, it's in the 100-year floodplain, but I was informed that they had, they got the DNR to change it, take it out of the 100-year floodplain. I don't know how you got the city or who got the authorization to go with the DNR and change that from the 100-year floodplain, because in the springtime, there's two, at least two feet of water down there, where they're proposing to build five houses. Number two, who is planning on paying to build these low-income homes? Have you guys got a financial, a finance establishment, or some, some bank, or somebody that's going to finance these homes, or are the taxpayers going to be buying, paying for these homes? I've been trying to find a road layout to find out how, where the houses are going to be built, the roads that are coming in, the roads that are going out. I can't seem to find that anywhere as to where, how that is established, because in my house, about four years ago, I guess Gerzak's, who owned the liquor store on Belt, when they redid the liquor store, he moved down the road. He still owned the land next to me, and all this land used to be Gerzak's, where the proposed homes are going to go. He in turn, his brother, gave it to his brother, his brother in turn deeded it to the city. Well, where my land ends, by the alley, behind Linden, in between Linden and Gallagher, I get a letter about five years ago from the city deeding that part of the land over to me. And I still am in awe, as they just, you know, where that alley was. So what I'm trying to figure out is where, where the proposed roads are coming in and going out, where these five homes are going to be built. In that area back there, where it's proposed, there's the VA Garden, where the veterans go to relax and work on a garden and into a gazebo that is there that's been donated for helping them mentally, physically, morally, and spiritually. I've noticed, you look, and there's always three or four veterans in there, in the gazebo, working in the gardens and everything. And I'm trying to find out if if that proposed, where the land, the homes are going to go, is that VA Garden going to be taken away? And another thing, the letters were never sent, they were sent to four people at the end of the street, and that was it. Nobody else on the on the block got a letter. I'm lucky, one of the ladies from down the street brought the letter up to me, because my land butts up against, I don't know if that's where the proposal is, and where the land, where the homes are going to be built. I mean, I've got really no objection to helping homeless or low-income people own their own home, but I just don't want to have my tax money paying for this. So if we can get a financial institution that's going to back this whole show, then it would be a different deal. I'm just, that's part of the financing, where the financing is coming from. That's that. About eight, nine years ago, the city was begging for storage units. I in turn contacted the planning commission, because I wanted to build storage units on this property in the back. And they said no, because it was in the 100-year floodplain. And I said, does it really matter? Because nobody is living there, there will be nobody living there, it's going to be storage. And they said, no, it's in the 100-year floodplain. So that took care of that part of it. And in that area, that's, it's a wetland, because in the spring, there's got to be a foot, foot and a half of water sitting back there. That back area is full of geese, it's full of cranes, ducks, frogs, and deer. You're going to be taking away their, that area that that they reside in. So at the end of that, okay, anybody can tell me what's what's going on as far as if, who has a layout, how I could get a hold of a layout? All I have is a telephone for the internet.
Thank you, sir. I think we got your your testimony. Any questions for Mr. Kavanaugh?
No questions, huh? How about answers? How about answers?
All right. Thanks again, sir, for your testimony.
Your Honor, Alder Storey would like to ask a question.
Alder, sure. Go ahead.
I appreciate you coming in. You're kind of saying that there was no communication or lack of preference with the planning, with the community development department?
Yep, they only did-
So you didn't get any letters from them at all?
Nothing. And the only ones that got a letter were the four houses on the end of the street, on the left and right-hand side, that was it. And she had dropped, one of them that got the letter dropped it off at, to my house. And that's why I'm here, to find out what's going on, because I'm worried about, say, property values, whatever, whoever's going to move in. Hopefully, if it's low income, hopefully, they're going to be good people that, you know, that want to better their life by owning their own home, as long as the city's not going to lease it to them or rent them the house. Because you know what happens with rentals? I don't know how many of you guys got rentals, but people don't respect your rental. I've had rentals, and I sold them all to get rid of them for that reason.
All right, that was my main question. And I think when the floor is closed, we can ask some questions, too. But that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder, any other questions for our guests? All right. Thank you, sir. Who made the motion to close the floor?
Johnson.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to close the floor, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Before we go to questions from Alders, maybe, we kind of did this last time around, but if we could go to Director Reneer Wig to just kind of summarize what's what's going on with these parcels in particular.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. These two parcels are actually zoned general industrial. They're at the north end of this project. Let me say that the DNR didn't change the floodplain, FEMA did, actually, and it took many, many years for them to reestablish floodplains. We totally understand that this is a wet area, even though the floodplain's been changed, and we're taking that into consideration when we look at development. We have no plans for this site at this point, so I don't know the five-house plan that you're referring to. Our our goal is to get all of this property zoned, so we can go out for RFP and actually look for some plans to do some housing on this site. So there are no streets planned, no houses planned at this point, just so you're aware of that, which, I don't know if that makes you feel better, but we haven't, we haven't done that yet. So it's not, we don't know the makeup of the house. I mean, we've been approached by veterans groups, actually, that wanted to do housing here, so that's a possibility. So we wanted to make this property right before we actually went out for RFP on it. And then, the VA Garden, we know that the VA Garden is there, and we're very cognizant of that fact, and we're going to, we're going to either leave the garden there or work with the VA to reestablish that garden. We know it's important. So at this point, there's no plans for the area. We just want to get the zoning corrected.
All right. Thanks, Director. And then, in terms of notification parameters, I know the city is always good, city staff always very good about abiding by those. I don't know if you have those parameters offhand, if not, that's fine, but maybe, maybe Mr. Buck or Director Reneer Wig on that.
So we notified neighbors 200 feet from those two parcels to the north. So we didn't notify the entire block all the way down. We, it's the adjacent neighbors to the two parcels we're looking to rezone on the north end.
Okay. Thank you. And then, we have Alder Johnson in the queue.
No, I think Director Reneer Wig answered. I was going to kind of tee you up to answer those questions, but you've already answered them, so.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yeah, just remember to press your buttons on the item itself. Alder Scanell?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we had our conversation and answered some of his questions. He had some new ones today, but certainly, we can call and talk again if you have other concerns. But as I stated, told him, this is a possible use. What we're hoping to see happen here is housing, and that our housing stock is short, and it would be good to get, you know, increase our housing stock. And I still support this item for that reason, that we, when, and on the north side, FEMA's changed the floodplain, not only in this area, but on the northeast side, and looking forward to what we can do to develop, to help our city grow. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck?
Yes, I, so I, and I know we, we talked about this at the last city council meeting, but I, I thought we could address the flooding issue, that, I believe we talked about that, the stormwater management would be implemented on any future development. So the concerns about the flooding would be part of the solution in developing it, right?
Absolutely. Director Reneer Wig or Director Ganeer?
Yes, I, when we looked at the site, we understood that if we were going to do housing, that we'd have to build it differently. We couldn't do a full basement. We may have to do some lift stations in this area, so we've taken that into consideration.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions on on this item? All right. Entertaining a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt on this, this ordinance. That was made by Alder Scanell, was it seconded by Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
I vote yes.
And Clerk, if you can just display and announce the vote.
Yes, so the vote was 12 to nothing, all in favor.
Very good. Thank you. On to ordinances, second reading, item two.
Alder Galvin would like to speak?
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. I've been made aware there's quite a few people here that would like to speak on an item towards the end of the agenda. I wasn't aware of this until just now. And I'm wondering if we could change the agenda to take the committee of the whole before, if that's doable. Right. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were done with it. All right. I blew up.
Is there a motion on item two?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any commentary? Seeing none, we'll use the board.
Is all standing on a yes?
Thank you. All right, you may vote. It's so odd.
I'm not turning up in mine either, I'm a yes.
All right. And that motion to adopt, the second item, General Ordinance 20-23, passes 12, nothing, all in favor.
All right. Thank you, Clerk. Alder Galvin, did you have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to change the agenda and move the item W, committee of the whole, up to next on our agenda.
Okay, is that a motion to reconsider the agenda?
Yes, it would be a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda, and then we'll have to do another motion to approve and amend.
Right. So Alder Galvin makes a motion to reconsider the agenda. Is there a second? Seconded by?
Alder Eck, Your Honor.
Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The agenda has been reconsidered. Entertaining a motion?
Motion to move item W up next on the agenda.
There's a motion to amend the agenda, to take up W after J. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Entertaining a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Motion has been made by Alder Scanell and seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay? And the ayes have it, and we are on item W.
Motion to open the floor for interested parties to speak.
Alder Galvin makes motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. And again, for our guests, just remember to state your name and address, and if you could keep things to three minutes, we would appreciate it.
We do have Jeanette Knill, who signed up, and also Portia Tuttle.
Hi, my name's Jeanette Knill. I live at 3003 Emma Lane Drive, Green Bay. I'm also the president of the Mahone Creek Neighborhood Association. And I'd like to speak to getting a new traffic study at the intersection of Nicolay Drive and East Shore Drive. My husband and I have lived in Mahone Creek neighborhood since December 2012, and the last traffic study was done in 2010. We lit, we initially lived at the Shores Apartments, which is on Nicolay, East Shore Drive empties, it ends right at Nicolay, right across the street from the Shores Apartment. We lived there for a couple months before we moved into our home on Emma Lane Drive the following spring. Since we have lived in the Mahone Creek neighborhood, 11 additional homes were built along Emma Lane, completing the subdivision for a total of 73 houses. In the last few years, TuneIn has expanded the Shores Apartment complex. I'm not sure how many apartments were added, but it's significant. Within our neighborhood association, which includes the Shores Apartment Complex, Mahone Court, Suzanne Court, Enderby Lane, and Emma Lane Drive, there are over 200 residences. So we've got to figure there's probably at least 200 cars, which is significantly more than there was in 2010. Mahone Court is the only street exiting our subdivision. The driveways for the church on the corner of Nicolay and Mahone Court, the BP gas station driveways on Nicolay and the Shores Apartment driveways, all exit into Nicolay Drive, very close to the intersection of Nicolay and East Shore Drive. Since the last traffic study, the additional homes and apartments have significantly increased traffic flow at this intersection. Other things that most likely are impacting this intersection that have changed since 2010 include the VA outpatient clinic, which opened in August 2013, the opening of Festival Foods, and other retail fast food venues, which repaired that awful triangle that had occurred there. And there's quite a few new venues over there. There have been new homes built in the Red Smith area, and also further north on Nicolay. And even though these places I just mentioned above are not directly within the site of Nicolay and East Shore Drive intersection, they definitely would contribute to the increased traffic flow. That BP gas station that's there is pretty close to 5457, so I'm sure there's a lot of people using that gas station that are coming from the VA before they get on 5457 to go on 43 North or South. There's just a lot of traffic over there now. And you have the university. This intersection is at the south end of UWGB. We also have the Bay Beach Wildlife Trails. There's an entrance there. There's no parking there, but you can walk in there if you feel brave enough to cross that intersection. And we have the trails for the Cochrane Arboretum, which is just north of Mahone Court. There's a lot of cyclists that, bicyclists, that are riding on Nicolay and down East Shore Drive. And now, there's this, that great bicycle trail that this, or bicycle lanes that the city put in on Webster that can connect. And so you have, I'm a cyclist myself. I come down Nicolay, East Shore Drive, and to come home, I've got to cross Nicolay. It's dangerous. If you want to go and walk over at the wildlife trails, it's really dangerous there. And we need to have something happen over there. We need to work to improve safety at this intersection, perhaps lower speed limits, traffic control signals, improved signage. I don't know, I'm not a civil engineer, but I really would encourage a new traffic study, because there's accidents there. I don't know how many. Luckily, I have never been involved in one, but I do have friends that have been. And so I-
All right. Thank, thank you so much for your-
Ask you to do that. Thank you. Thank you.
For your testimony, ma'am. Any questions for our guests?
And next, we have Portia Tuttle.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak and moving the agenda item up tonight. I just am in favor of what Jeanette mentioned. There have been a lot of changes in that area. Just the apartments did expand within the last two years. Like Jeanette said, it's a heavy pedestrian area. There's lots of traffic. Lots of people are biking down that road and walking to access the trails at UWGB. It's also very close to the Bay Beach Wildlife Sanctuary. There are events at UWGB and the Widener Center where traffic can get very crazy at those times, as well as traffic with Red Smith School. The road is also very curvy, and traffic is regularly going 50 miles per hour, so 35 mile-per-hour speed limit. I think it would benefit to bring that down to 30 miles per hour, at least in some spots on that road, because like Jeanette said, it's a very dangerous area. I'm also, just wanted to say that I'm in favor of looking at this and doing a traffic study for this intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Mayor, it's Alder Brunet. She's did not mention her address.
Oh, I apologize. So my address is 2919 Emma Lane Drive, and I've lived in this area since I was born. My grandparents reside right down the road as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Alder Burnett.
Your honor, if I may?
Yes, Alder Scanell.
Um, it seems like we're doing committee work here, I don't quite understand the agenda item. Shouldn't this just be referred? Why, there's no other, I don't know what action, if this agenda item could be explained to me, I don't know exactly what we're doing here.
Yeah, Alder Burnett or Alder Grant, perhaps?
I could, I could, and then Alder, sorry, am I on yet?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you for that.
Well, we, I suppose.
Well, it is a point of order, just to understand, yeah. Attorney Bungert, it's a point of order, okay. So, I requested it be placed on the agenda, and I should have made that under the announcement so everyone knew what was going on. And we opened the floor, which is a good thing, but I, before we opened the floor, either Alder Grant or I would have explained it. So basically, over the week, Alder Grant had placed a communication on the agenda of the Traffic Bicent Pedestrian Committee, which met yesterday. The omission, not sure what happened, not trying to blame anyone, but the, any staff or anything like that, but the understanding for some of her constituents was that the agenda would be able to be discussed yesterday, but the omission was noticed on Friday, so she had reached out to me, and we were kind of brainstorming the idea in order to get this traffic study done and referred to staff, that we would just enter this as a committee of the whole agenda due to the pressing nature of it. So, I don't know if it's really up for debate, I think based on just the few people we spoke to and Alder Grant's, you know, expertise on that area, and the fact that she represents the area, she would just be a simple referral to staff to do the traffic study. I think that that would be a sensible outcome, but I do think that people who are speaking tonight were probably expecting this, be able to speak yesterday. So that's why I recommended it be placed on the agenda, because the next traffic commission was going to be late November.
I'll excuse us a correction, it won't be until December.
Till December, so we, so that's the background, Alder Grant could probably fill in more of the details.
But we're still not, the only thing we're going to do is refer.
If that's the wishes of the committee.
Well, I, why not just put in a communication to the TBP, you know, to the next traffic bike?
It's in December.
December, but still, I mean, we're not going to do anything, other than do that, so why not just automatically go right there? I don't quite understand why, we're not going to do commission work on the floor. And it seems like that's what we're doing.
We could, I mean, we've done it before, but just the nature, the pressing nature of the issue.
Well, we're not going to make out any decision other than to refer to staff.
Correct, and that's fine, I think, yeah.
Right, which could have just been done at the beginning by not bringing it to the committee of the whole, but just referred to commission to begin with. If you had done that, it'd be the same thing. Why do you need the whole council to refer it? Why not, if you're, this is your concern, put in that communication?
She did, that's the point, that's the point.
Right, and it got, there was a mis, alright, so then it comes up the next time.
Because we don't, sorry, we don't do traffic studies in the winter, so I was going to ask staff if it's possible to do the traffic study before this winter. And there's other things that could possibly be addressed. There is a sign on a median that could possibly be moved back sooner than later. There might be a few quick fixes prior to the traffic study that might alleviate some of the issues.
So what would be, that's not on the agenda item, so what, how do we, couldn't you just ask staff? Why does that even take council action?
Well, traffic study still needs to happen, and they must be approved to do the study, which is what we're doing.
It doesn't have to be approved, well, if you had put in a communication to, you said you did put in that communication.
Correct.
There was, and there was a mix-up, and it didn't get on.
Correct.
So, it should just go on the next one. And in the meantime, if you'd like to see some action taken, did you talk to the director to see what action could be taken? Because that's not on this agenda.
I have talked to Tom, who's in the traffic department, who sent me the traffic study. First of all, the November meeting is now canceled, so it's not even going to be addressed until December, and people are very concerned about this intersection. So I wanted the staff to be directed to start the traffic study.
Okay, I think we have clarification, let's get a motion to close the floor.
So can we just refer to staff to be?
Your honor, the floor is still open, and I'm not sure if there are more people who are willing to speak.
Yep, yep, I know, I was asking for a motion to close the floor.
This'll solve it.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue? Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address.
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor by Alder Galvin, seconded by whom?
Morgan.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the floor is closed.
Make a motion to refer to staff. Is there anything you want to, specifics you want to add to that, or?
Just, again, if there's anything immediate with that sign, I do have a picture of it, and I don't, that was actually involved in the accident that happened on the fourth, and it was hit. So, I know people have said it as a blind spot for trying to turn into oncoming traffic. So, I don't know if it's possible to get that moved back before the winter, but a traffic study overall.
Motion to refer to staff with staff being able to take any safety precautions immediately if they can.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Grant. Any further discussion? Alder Burry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Alder Grant, you know, when there's a safety concern and it gets missed on a committee, it's unfortunate, but rather than wait two months, I'm glad you contacted the president to do this right away. Director Granier, what's the timeline on a traffic study? Can we get that done yet this year? Or, you know, I don't, I don't know how long that takes.
No, we can't.
So we'll be looking at spring?
Absolutely.
And, off the top of your head, are there some safety measures we can implement? Or do we have our new traffic engineer yet, or?
No, we don't have a traffic engineer, that's what's going to cause the delay in getting the traffic study done. I'm going to have to fit that in amongst my other duties, and I'm going to have to perform that traffic study myself.
Is the assistant, Mr. Sherman's, help with this?
Mr. Sherman's is not an engineer.
Okay. But there are some safety things we can do here?
Possible. I was having a discussion with Alder Stevens prior to the meeting, and he brought up the issue of the sign, it's something we're willing to take a look at. We need to make sure that sign placement versus where the stop bar is, to make sure we don't have a conflict there, that may be why the sign is located where it is already. But we're definitely willing to take a look at that.
I appreciate it, you know, it sounds like there's a problem there going on. My mother-in-law lives over there, so I've gone through that intersection many times. Do you need direction to do the traffic study with this request, or does that need to be handled separately? Is that understood that that's being done? I just want to clarify, you know, are we directing that it be done? It didn't sound like it.
My, my understanding of the motion was refer to, refer to staff for study. That's inherent in the motion.
Okay, perfect, and I just wanted to clarify that publicly that it is getting done, and I trust you'll, you'll do whatever you can to help that intersection out. Thanks, thanks Steve, Director.
Thanks Alder, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been referred to staff. Back up to landmarks. What was your motion there Alder?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Let's go to Attorney Bungert to explain the process here.
Yes, so, so this item is up for appeal of the Landmarks Commission decision to deny the certificate of appropriateness for 1137 South Monroe. So this will be a quasi judicial hearing this evening. It is the goal of the council to provide and conduct a hearing that is fair, informed, appearance and substance. To ensure that this hearing satisfies these goals, each member of the council must confirm that you do not have an interest or conflict of interest in this matter, or you have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter. At this point, you can make a point of order if you need to voice any such conflicts. If you have any conflicts of interests, or you've had any ex parte communications with the appellant or others, now would be the time to state those for the record. Yes, Alder Galvin.
Thank you. Yes, I have talked to Mr. Hirkman on the phone earlier this week, and he was just making me aware that he was going to be addressing this at council. I asked him to put together a packet of information for me, which I think every council member has received. And is this where I say whether I feel I have a conflict?
Yes, if you can decide whether this matter, whether you can still decide this matter based upon the record and a fair and impartial matter.
I believe I can.
Alright, anybody else that has anybody, any conflicts to decide? Yes, Alder Burnett.
Yeah, thank you, the appellant had reached out to me on a separate matter regarding my professional life, that at that time did not know that I was a member of the city council. So that became, he became aware of that, conveyed that to me, which is why I abstained when this was discussed briefly last meeting. I don't think it would affect my decision-making, but I'm willing to abstain if you think, you know, if there's any potential conflict of interest that I may not feel or see myself.
Right, there isn't, I'm not seeing a direct conflict at law, so it's entirely up to your discretion, Alder, as to whether you feel you can still remain impartial and make a decision based upon the record in front of you.
Sure, I do think I can.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Alder Johnson.
Thank you Attorney Bungert, I am on the Landmarks Commission. I, in, this was before the Landmarks Commission multiple times, in both occasions I did vote in support of the COA, I guess, meaning that I supported the appellant, the appellant's request. After one of those meetings, I did have a conversation with the chair, Randane, about the reasons for why I voted the way that I did. I just explained in greater detail why I did. That said, I feel that I can be impartial, listen to the facts, and vote accordingly.
Thank you. Anyone else with a conflict or ex parte communication? Alright, seeing no one else, we can proceed to verify notice. The appellant in this hearing has received proper notice of today's proceedings, and I believe is present, can the clerk confirm that?
Yes, Mr. Hirkman is present.
Okay. So the council will either announce its decision tonight, or take the matter under advisement, and have a decision at the next council meeting. The council will make findings of fact and conclusions of law based upon the record before it. At this time, the following evidence has been submitted into the record, the appellant's brief in support of an appeal for the Landmarks Commission denial of a COA application for 1137 South Monroe, Green Bay, Wisconsin. And then also the Landmarks Commission staff brief in support of denial of the COA application for the same property, 1137 South Monroe Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Staff and the appellant have an opportunity to present evidence and testimony under oath. All witnesses presenting testimony need to be sworn in under oath by the clerk. The evidence needs to be credible, relevant, and probative. The time limits that are prescribed are 10 minutes for arguments and five minutes each for rebuttals. The council may ask questions of both parties during or after the presentation of testimony and evidence. The questioning must be limited to strictly just questions. Council members should not be testifying or presenting any opinions or statements. The appellant will present first, followed by city staff representing the Landmarks Commission, and any members of Landmarks Commission, and this will repeat for the rebuttals. Any evidence presented will need to be admitted into evidence by motion. Once testimony is concluded, the council will need to move into closed session to deliberate. Once back in open session, council will either announce its decision, as I mentioned, or take the matter under advisement and have a decision at the next meeting. The council will make their findings of fact, conclusions of law, based upon the record before it. Shall adopt those findings at the next council meeting, and copies of the same will be provided to the appellant once so adopted. That, Mr. Mayor, concludes the housekeeping for the quasi judicial hearing, and we can proceed with the appellant moving forward with their evidence and testimony.
Very good. Do we need a motion to open the floor, attorney?
We do not for the parties that are, that are participating in, in the, in the hearing itself, as they are slated to speak as part of this hearing.
Okay, very well. So, Mr. Hirkman goes first, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Hirkman, if you'd like to approach the podium and state your name and address, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, my name is John Hirkman, and I live at 1133 South Monroe Avenue. I own the home at 1137 South Monroe Avenue.
Mr. Hirkman, we just need to administer the oath for, so that you present your testimony under oath, so the clerk can do that now.
So, Mr. Hirkman, can you please raise your right hand?
I do.
And repeat after me, that I swear that the evidence and testimony I will give.
I swear all the evidence and testimony I will give.
And the section will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. I live at 1133 South Monroe Avenue, I own the home at 1137 South Monroe Avenue. I've lived in the home for 40 years, I've owned the other home for 20 years. It became apparent to us that the roof had caved in on the garage from heavy snow, and we had to ask our friends to vacate. Took a while, but they did. And then we decided we'd restore the house. And we started in October, or prior to October, to restore the house. The city came in and suggested we had a permit for, we were going to do the garage. We started to notice the bathtub and a few things were falling through the floor. We had to do an extensive remodel, and as we did that, the city asked us to stop work, present a full set of plans, which we did. The plans were approved, and we were issued a permit in October of '22. In April of '23, I received a letter from the city, kind of a general mailing, that said, you know, you live in this neighborhood, if you're going to do anything, you need to request a certificate of appropriateness. So I filled out paperwork, I said, oh, you know, good citizen, I'll just fill out paperwork, I sent it in. And the next day, they came and slapped a stop work order on it, on this place. And then followed that, May, we went to the thing, and I was totally on, we were talking about windows, I thought we were talking about a portico that was on the, that I had designed on the house, and we had, was an architectural feature. And the, the landmark commission had a, had an issue with it. And I said, okay, look, I just want to move on, I'll take it off. So, I, you know, took the thing down, and got rid of it, and just said, well, it, because it wasn't on the plan. It was something that was added by the landscape architect, wasn't on the original plan. So, the plan that went to the, that we were approved on, there were only, there were three openings originally, it showed one was going to be stuck over, because a new stairwell went in, and it, just how it worked, in your packet, you're going to see a picture how the banner, the railings actually hit those windows. I think the important part for us is that all the work was done in the house prior to April of '23, it was all completed, had been inspected multiple times, along with plumbing and electrical and structural because of the staircase. And all this work was done. And then in May, the landmark commission said, we, in fact, during the commission interview, they, Jason was asked, is there any historical significance to the glass blocks? And he said, no. And I thought that would settle the issue, well, it didn't. And so then I went back to ordinary business, and they determined that all three of the openings should be put back in, and they should be glass blocks. So, as we focus on this, and I also want to thank you for your time, as we focus on this, if I had never been given that permit in October of '22, we wouldn't be standing here today. This would have all got worked out. But I did get a permit, and once I had a permit and a contractor, we just went forward. And all the work on the inside of the house was done during the winter, because, because of the stop work orders, the delays took us out of the demolition, the garage, and the garage, and the, and concrete, till the The delays took us out of the demolition, the garage and the garage and the concrete till the following spring. So we worked all winter in the house and then that stopped. So my focus is, you know, and I'm asking you to have this focus because the city in September, when I went, I put a new COA together because I said, no, there is significant difference here. The plan shows that one window is gone. It shows that the Uniform Dwelling Code says you have to have openable windows in every dwelling space. So the architect put them in. And, but the city, I was surprised I had, they had legal at the meeting to greet me in the September meeting. So tonight I brought legal. Steve Krieger will represent me in any, if there's any back and forth with legal, he's with Godfrey, with Conway, Olnechek, and Jerry. So I'll let him deal with that. I'm here just to answer you, you know, and try to understand my frustration because I did go back and talk to, I think it's in zoning, it's really Ms. Hummel. And I sent her, the next morning, I said, I sent her an email, I said, because I went home, I was frustrated. I said, how can this happen? And I went home, I look at the plan and there it is. There's a note on the plan. The diamond triangle, two, note two, this is going to be removed and stuccoed over. So I called, I sent her an email and she said, we don't reconsider. And I said, you don't reconsider? I had two, it was a three to two vote. I had two people in the minority. I didn't understand why they couldn't bring the motion back. I didn't understand it. It shut, that was just shut down. And during that whole process, yes, I didn't petition you that first 30 days because it was still, I'm used to dealing with reasonable people doing reasonable things. Okay? And then that went by. And when I repositioned, when I reapplied in August, I, then the August meeting didn't happen. The Landmarks Commission didn't have an August meeting. In September, the night before the meeting, I received the thing that they were not going to, well, I was confused. They couldn't, they couldn't receive it and they couldn't deny it. And I was like, okay. So I went to the meeting, I was confronted by legal, and I was over my depth at that point. But also confusing to me, when I read the analysis of denial, they say I shouldn't be allowed to petition because of 30 days. But yet on 9/15, I got a, an email, but I was saying, from Ms. Hummel saying, you know, you have to let me know if you're going to petition. I let her know. And on 9/29, the legal deputy sends me the stuff that I have to have by the 3rd do this, by the 12th do this, and by the 17th I have to be here. So I'm confused. I obviously have a right because that motion went forward on the 5th, on September because one of the commissioners asked, will the Hirkmans have a right to appeal? And he was told yes. And that's, so I'm confused about that. I've taken the time to put the petition together just because I, I think everybody here should understand it. It's not, I'm not against what it is, but the administration of it is really distressful. And I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you. Mr. Hirkman, how much did you spend on this project?
An embarrassing amount.
Embarrassing?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. My dad, he sold a house in Astor neighborhood and he always said it was more costly to maintain it than it was to buy it, so.
Well, originally I had planned I was going to take it down. And then my wife said, she wasn't in favor of that. She said she liked the idea that it was there in our backyard, it's more quiet because we get it, we live on a highway, okay? So I said, okay, then we, then we got to fix it.
So you own the house you live in?
I do.
Is next door, you bought that 30 some years ago?
I bought that from Jimmy Meyer, Krieger Jewelers, Meyer, oh, Krieger, Meyer Jewelers, 20 some years, 20, over 20 years ago.
Okay, and this house you bought, how long ago?
20 years. The other one I bought 40 years.
Okay.
At 1133, I've lived there 40 years. It was a cottage. And then when I got married, I realized there wasn't enough room. And Amy said I liked the neighborhood, so we fixed it.
Okay. But can you give me a ballpark, how much you've spent on fixing up your home?
The 1137?
The one question here, yeah, 1137, how much have you spent, roughly?
A couple hundred thousand.
Okay. And you thought you were doing everything right, getting the permits?
Absolutely.
Okay. And when you bought the home, it was glass block window?
It was.
Was it glass block when you bought the house next door?
Oh, when I bought, which?
Forty years ago, when you moved in. Was it glass block?
Forty years ago?
I thought you said you were there 40 years.
At 1133, I was there 40 years.
Okay.
There were no glass block windows in there.
Then?
No. In 1137, I, there, that's when the 11, the block windows were in. My son Brad thinks that Jim put them there. He said they put them, they even remodeled it and put them there. I have no idea how they got there. I don't know how they got there.
All right. How much do you think it's going to cost you to convert the house back to the way it was?
It's not, you know, people, people think you just take out the sash and put in the glass blocks. It don't work like that. You actually got to take out the whole wall, it's got to be framed. I mean, it's, there is another solution. I mean, that 20 grand maybe, I don't know. Take a number. Oops, excuse me.
But as far as you know, and as far as your contractor knew, you were doing everything by the letter of the law, by getting that permit and then completing the work, allowing the inspectors to come in, filling out the form from the Landmarks Commission, sending it in. Okay, thank you.
And I, and yes, to answer your question, yes to all of it. And the, note two told us to take it out. And the other, the other thing, the way the windows got in rather than the glass blocks was, according to my architect, he said, he called me up and he said, John, I think they should be openable. And you said, yeah, put them in like the rest of them. So that's evidently what I said. So, okay, that's what happened.
Thank you, sir. Is there, I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to talk?
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yep. So the house is remodeled now, you're done?
Done.
Okay. And the issue here is you, the glass block was in when you bought it, but it was not part of the original building, as far as you know?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I mean, I, that house, I don't, when I look at it, I can't even tell you if it was a house in the beginning. I don't know.
Okay.
It's an old thing. It's old. It's not anymore. It'll be there for 50 years now. No.
And you mentioned, who was it that, window safety that it, because the glass block obviously can't be opened and there, is that? Well, maybe that's a question for you, that's a question for someone else. Okay.
Well, no, it is part of the Uniform Dwelling Code that you will have openable windows for ventilation in every inhabitable space. And those are the only two windows in that whole room that open, period.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from our council?
Yeah, Alder Stoyer.
Go ahead.
Thank you, John, for coming in. You know, I think, you know, the Landmarks Commission, you know, generally is, you know, if you do work on the inside of your home, usually there's not a big issue. It's usually in the outside, the side, you know, whatever, you know, that's what they're looking for. If you do work inside, and you did work inside, so I guess my question is that, you know, you got the glass block windows that were there. So did you consider that interior work or outside work? And in a sense, you're taking them out and putting in windows, so.
You know, under oath, I didn't consider any of it. I mean, it just was part of the plan. It went ahead. It was done. And I, you know, I never thought about it. I never gave it a thought. The windows, the blocks were broken, see? The headers broke and sort of blocks were, they were cracked, they were broken. So they had to come out. I couldn't just leave them the way they were. Okay.
So you had a building permit to do that?
I had a building permit in October of '22.
Okay. So, and the city gave you that building permit?
Yes, sir, they did.
And then, of course, you said in '23 or was it '24?
'23.
'23, I'm sorry, April?
It was April, it was in April of '23 when I got the letter.
Denied the COA.
And then, in May, I was denied the COA. May of '23.
Well, that could be a proxy, you know, just looking at that, you know, what the city said you could do and then, you know, the Landmarks Commission saying you can't do it. So we'll talk, we'll talk more about that. That's all I have right now.
Mr. Hirkman, taking a look at your permit process, that permit was pulled in October of '22, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and at any point in that process, were you advised that you needed to apply for a COA?
Nope.
Okay, and I assume, and I'll verify this with staff, but I assume perhaps that that was maybe because the presumption was that it was all interior work. But what you're suggesting, according to this plan, is that item number two that you alluded to specifically calls out to remove the window. So it was part of your site plan that you submitted?
It was.
Okay. From your perspective, and this doesn't necessarily speak to this case, but once you understand the COA process, you received that letter, you proactively reached out to city. Have you found this process of applying for COAs and what applies to be easy, understandable, complex, cumbersome? And I'm asking that question because there are a lot of residents that are impacted by this and if we need to streamline this process, I'd at least like to be aware of that.
Well, I can, all I know is, and I've said to Amy, what makes me angry is this could be a young couple moving into one of these neighborhoods and happened to them. And they don't have, you know, they've seen their mortgage payment double in the last year. They don't have the wherewithal to call the attorneys and say, I need representation. No, I don't know what they would have done. But I'm not against what they're doing, but yes, it's a longer conversation. I planned to have it, you know, I, you know, I had planned to say when this was over, I want to get a meeting with the mayor. I want to talk to him about it because it's, I've studied it now. And I've looked at how the commissions are supposed to work and what they're supposed, you know. And I think it's pretty simple, it can simplify it for everybody. Architects, you know, you can't buy a house in this city without a sump pump, right? But yet we depend on the realtor to tell the person buying a house in one of these districts that, you know, if you're going to do something, you know, it's a little different. So I was, to answer your question, yeah, I don't think, I don't think, you know, you're on the commission. I don't think the city should make a recommendation to you to deny or that. That's, to me, that's the Landmarks Commission responsibility. They should provide you the information. And then your commission should be charged with responsibility of studying it, looking at it, preparing for that meeting, and then come there and ask the questions, not stamping the book for them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And thank you for your time.
All right, now we will have staff representing the Landmarks Commission and any members of the Landmarks Commission to present their testimony.
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Hummel. Do you need me to do the oath as well?
Correct.
Yes.
So if you would just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I swear that the evidence?
I swear that the evidence.
And testimony I will give?
And testimony that I will give.
And this action will be the truth?
And this action will be the truth. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Stephanie Hummel. I'm a planner with the City of Green Bay. I think I've seen most of you before. I work with Jason Flat, who is our preservation specialist, and we staff the Landmarks Commission together. So some background on this process and this application in particular. This work permit started as an internal permit. So our inspection division received this for all the internal work. They processed it as such. We do have a process within our software that does flash when it's something in a historic district. So it'll say Astor Park, so that way the inspectors know to get me involved and to request that COA for that kind of work. However, that's only relevant for external work. So this permit was started as an internal work permit. It was issued as such. It was then amended when it was realized that the garage was going to need work. So because they were going into an existing permit, they didn't get the screen that flashed, this is Astor Park, get staff involved. So that's where that, there was the error in not getting the COA when that permit was extended because it was an amendment within our system which didn't register it. We have since fixed that, so that way this doesn't happen again. But when that amendment was put through, it was for that garage work only. So the permit application, the information supplied within that permit, even the building plans that were submitted all show the three windows. It doesn't show the covering for the stucco, it doesn't show replacing them with operable windows. It has the three openings on there throughout. So not only our staff viewed it as all three windows are going to be retained, our inspection division also felt that that was what they were proposing. So we got the approval for the stucco work done for the garage work. At that initial meeting in May that where the first COA was heard, there were multiple projects as part of this COA application. So all of them were approved outside of that window one. With the Landmarks Commission even noting, a permit's already been pulled for the garage, so we're not even going to review it. They didn't look at it, they didn't ask questions about it. We noted it was staff error that that permit was issued without the COA and we took it for what it is. However, the rest of it was judged against what it should have been judged by, our municipal code. So as far as some of that background information, you know, it's important to note that that part of that permit was issued incorrectly. We fixed that internally to make sure that doesn't happen again. But the window project was not part of that permit and we stand by that. There was no error in that. There are some notes on the face of the building, or the building plans that were submitted. One said, you know, repair the windows, one said replace the windows. They were conflicting. But the repair one was the last one. And in reading building plans, they kind of go in that order, the notes get added. So whatever's at the bottom is considered to be the most recent note. So that's all that we had. Through all that talk with our inspection division, that's how they perceived it as well. That's how they read their building plans. So from our end, there was no error with the window project. This was not presented as part of the building permit, so no permit was issued for the windows at any time. It was for the internal work and then for that garage work. So throughout the summer, we've been working with the applicant on some other projects that were at the house too. There was a fencing project, some rear windows, a rear patio, the front patio, a lot of work has been done and it does look great. But the window issue never really got resolved. So we had, you know, in the first COA application, sent out a letter that showed that that had been denied and then the appeal process, which is a 30-day appeal window to come before this body to appeal. So as we sent that out, John did respond the next day saying, hey, can't you just reconsider this? And I said, no, the appeal process exists for this purpose. And no appeal was received. So he was aware of that process, did not take advantage of that process. So we kind of thought that was the end of that. So within communications about the other COA applications, we had also asked, so what's your timeline for restoring this? Just a reminder, we still have to restore these windows. Didn't get anything related to that. Outside of that, we also were working with him on some other issues at the house that then have been, now all have been approved outside of this window. So we have noted multiple times via email, via the COA letters, that the windows needed to be restored. There is some information here that's being shared that I don't know that it's being shared in a false way, but the windows, the glass block windows that are in question, those were there when the building was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So those windows were historic in their own right. Also, the glass block window look is very particular to that architectural style. And that's the information that the Landmarks Commission used in denying that application because it is important to that house and to that architectural style that those windows be there. And the burden of proof does lie on the applicant to show, no, these windows weren't there or they are beyond repair. We didn't get any of that information. And it was asked for before that main meeting. We have email correspondences and where I say, it looks like you're asking for windows to be replaced. What's the information on these? And I did not receive that information. So that brings us to this COA application, which was the September one, in which he applied for the windows. So that brings us to this COA application, which was the September one, in which he applied for the windows to be replaced exactly as they are now. Since this, that was the same application, it was the same project, there are no changes to the project. I thought, okay, maybe we don't even accept this because for other parts of our municipal code, you're not allowed to reapply within twelve months if something is denied. However, the preservation code and the Green Bay Municipal Code doesn't have that, so it's considered a loophole right now. You can perpetually reapply for these COA applications because there is no timeline associated with a denial. You know, you get thirty days to, to appeal, but then you can reapply right away, and it can be the same project. So that's unfortunate on our end. We do plan to clean that up with a text amendment so this doesn't happen again. Because the application that was brought forward is the same one that was seen in May. It's the same one that he had the opportunity to appeal and did not take advantage of. So now he has been able to reapply for the same project, got the same result at Landmarks Commission, and here we are tonight. Just some other things to, to note. The windows are the only thing in question here, so the, the option of converting back, there's, that's not a requirement of the Landmarks Commission. It would just be to restore those three windows to glass block. We also don't necessarily take cost into association with this kind of stuff, especially because he did the work without a permit and without a COA. So I think that it would be very short-sighted to say, well, it costs money to put these windows in. Well, he wasn't allowed to do it. He did not have a valid work permit or a valid COA for those actions. Additionally, we send out a letter to property owners in historic districts every year, reminding them. That is the letter that he was referring to that he received. So this isn't new information. We don't depend on realtors to relay this information for us. We, as preservation staff, send out that letter noting that they have funding resources available to them, that we as staff are there if they have any questions, and that COAs are required for external work. So this wasn't new information, you know, this has been happening for many years now that we've been doing this, and we had a very robust reservation ordinance revamp in twenty-eighteen that he would have gotten many letters for that as well. So I don't think it was a surprise that it's a historic district. As far as the operable windows are concerned, I have the full backing of our inspection division on this, those would have been grandfathered in. They still can be grandfathered in because there was not a valid work permit to put in the operable windows. So our inspection division, and they represent the universal dwelling code, they have no issues with putting the glass block windows in because those would be grandfathered under our code. Um, I think that that is all that I have. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Hummel, um, you said that the, uh, the glass block windows were in the house when the area was declared a historic site.
Yes.
What year was that?
Yes, I can't do that, what, eighty? Nineteen eighty.
So thirty-three years ago.
Yes.
All right.
No, more than that. I was born in eighty-eight, so forty-three.
Forty-three. So the glass block windows could have been put in the year before.
It's possible. We don't have a lot of photographic evidence of this property because there was very heavy foliage in the front of it, and we only take photos from the right-of-way. So at the time of listing in eighty, that would have been.
Okay, so the house I lived in, which was built in twenties, my dad could have done a whole lot of changing of it, but whatever was present in nineteen eighty was considered historic, and they would have to maintain that.
Well, based on the national, the, the National Register of Historic Places, when you get registered as a district, it's based off the architectural style of that time. So we have the same conversation about our downtown district. People say, well, the building would be cooler if you took off this facade. Well, the art deco is why it was listed. So it's the same conversation. It's based on that time of listing.
Okay. And then you said that the windows were put in illegally. How come our inspection department didn't cite him for doing that?
You would have to ask our inspection department. Um, I believe that because there were so many moving pieces going on at this property. I mean, there were so much that even when we did the initial site visit, we didn't capture all the things that needed the COA. There was, oh, I mean, there's a lot that's changed at that property. So I'm not sure why there wasn't an initial citation for the installation, or if it's because they knew that we were working on it.
Okay. All right, so our inspectors failed to notice that he had put in different types of windows and closed one in. Our system failed to notice that he had asked for exterior work to be done, and so Landmarks wasn't aware of it to take any kind of action before he actually started doing any kind of work.
For the garage, correct. The permit was for the garage.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Go ahead, Alder Morgan.
Yes, Alder Morgan.
Is there any historic things you can tell us about this house? I know, like, we recently had talked about one on the west side that was part of the former, original Fort Howard. Is there anything on this that, do we know when it was first built? Do we know, did some famous, famous government person from Green Bay live in this ever, or is there anything that?
No famous people, unfortunately.
People would want to come to this house on a tour and see it?
Uh, the one thing to note about this house is that it is the international architectural style, which is very rare for residential homes in general, but extremely rare for northeast Wisconsin. There aren't that many around anymore. The international style is that very, like, linear that you see in office buildings, very square in nature, lots of windows around the corners. So that would be one of the major things, especially for this district. I don't know if Jason has anything additional to add. We do keep pretty detailed property notes on all the properties that are listed in historic districts, so that way if anything does come up, we are able to share that. But a lot of the homes in Astor were just listed based on architectural style versus, you know, JFK stayed here once. We don't really have a lot of those in Astor Park.
I know the Astor Park Neighborhood Association, as a fundraiser, does some tours and stuff like that. Is this a type of a house, or do you know if this house is on any tours or anything, that it's going to affect it?
That I'm not sure. Um, they put those together on their own. I know also, like, the Historical Society does walking tours as well. Um, like I mentioned before, up to this point, there had been a lot of foliage in front of the house, so it was really hard to see from the road. So I doubt that it was a part of any walking tour at that point because we're not allowed to go on private property for a lot of those kind of things.
Thank you.
Sir, I guess I'll just go. Thank you, Stephanie, for the information. Just a couple of questions. You had mentioned at the end, and I just, I want to get clarity on this about the Uniform Dwelling Code. Indicating this would be grandfathered in, and the piece that I just want to understand, because if the code says we need to have operable windows and we remove these, you're saying that technically because it's in a historic district, it's grandfathered, and that becomes a moot point? Is, is that right?
Yes, so there are a couple of different things within the UDC that give leniency towards historic properties. The one that comes up the most is the railing, um, height railings for porches. So right now, if you take off the whole porch and rebuild it, it has to come up to code. If you're taking off portions of it, you can keep the lower railing, which is more historically appropriate. So when it comes to things like the operable windows, because there wasn't a permit or a COA issued for those to be removed, they're still considered grandfathered. And then, for the purposes of this conversation, even if they were given a permit and they wanted to change them, they could. You know, if the COA was granted, they'd be able to change them. But it would never be a requirement that a historical home has to come up to those codes. So anything that's existing gets to be grandfathered regardless of historic status. It's really just, this is an existing condition, so unless you're doing a major remodel, um, if there's a life safety complaint, like those sorts of things. But usually the operable windows in this case would be for ventilation.
So right now, the existing condition is operable windows?
Yes, but not, they did it without a valid permit, which is why they're still grandfathered.
The code states that there must be a valid permit to make the change?
Permitted work, yes.
Okay. The, the block you mentioned was, was in the application, or at least was, was in the home when the application was submitted in nineteen eighty. Do you know if the block was a defining characteristic?
Yes, I got a thumbs up. Yes, it was.
Okay, and do we know when block, like, started to be used?
Like in residential homes?
Correct.
Um, Jason might know that. That is not my wheelhouse.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Wait, you want to be sworn in?
Correct, yes. Jason can, Mr. Flat can step up, get sworn in, and then can present additional answers.
This is the architecture guy, so if you have architecture questions, this is the person asked, don't you?
Okay, Mr. Flat, please repeat after me. I swear that the evidence.
I swear that the evidence.
And testimony I will give in this action. And testimony that I will give in this action.
And testimony that I will give in this action.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
Thank you.
So there is a question about glass block use in architectural features.
When did that start?
So, as much as I like to convince people that I have an encyclopedic knowledge of these things, I couldn't tell you the year. I know that glass block was a common feature by the third, fourth quarter of the nineteenth century, primarily to let light in. You'll see them on some old commercial buildings occasionally in, like, transit windows or, or down low. For this international style of architecture, it was a very prominent feature typically used to have this clear, wavy glass block. Uh, when the, when that architectural style became a thing, say nineteen twenties into the nineteen thirties and even into the nineteen forties. This particular house, it's a contributing house in the Astor Historic District. That means it's, you know, historically significant, officially so. And although we don't have photographs of it in, say, the nineteen twenties, circumstantially, we can say that glass block is appropriate to that architectural style. I could say, you know, probably original to the house. I can't prove it. What I can say is that it was there, and the Landmarks Commission never tells a property owner, you must do something. The Landmarks Commission responds to proposals to make changes. So here, we did not receive a proposal to make a change until said change was already made. Typically, well, the way this works per the, per the Department of the Interior, the National Park Service, if a property owner wants to make some sort of change, that change should be based on documentary evidence. That's my nearly circuitous way of saying that any burden of proof to say that, no, those windows aren't historic, really rests on the homeowner or the property owner and their research that they do. We, as the city, can't, can't expect, unfortunately, as much as I'd like to, we can't say, hey, what did it look like in nineteen twenty-three? That burden of proof isn't on the city. So all I can tell you with certainty is there were glass blocks there, they were probably historic. We're fairly well convinced they were there in nineteen eighty when this was, you know, deemed historic, and now they're not, so.
Okay, thank you.
Verbal answer.
No, and it does, it helps me frame this a little bit. So, and, and of course, I think there is one thing at play here, is were they historic or not? Doesn't sound like we have documentation to prove it, we can use context clues. But the, when we talk about the Secretary of Interior Standards, what is their position? And, and then one of, like, precursor to this was saying, I'm not suggesting, right, that they're not historic. I just want to understand the response to this question, which is, what is the Secretary of Interior Standards about replacing nonhistoric material with nonhistoric material?
So, replacing nonhistoric material with nonhistoric material, it should be appropriate to the architectural style of the building. In this case, we have what we believe to have been historic material, and now there's two aspects to consider. The material itself, that would be the glass block for, for something else now, the clear windows that have been sold. And the second aspect here is the fenestration change. So there were three window openings. Now there are two. So we're looking at not just removal of historic material, but also now an alteration of the historic design of the building. Historically, three window openings, now down to two. Also, by the way, we've dumpstered the historic, presumably glass block, and introduced a new type of window that is not compatible with the architectural style of building.
Okay, just one final question, and, and I don't know if you guys are equipped to handle this, it's about building permits. Yeah, you, you, you discussed that about it before. So, um, I get the conflict, right? I, I see it here where, while there's the notation, verbatim, remove window, prepare opening for stucco. But to your, to your point, right, that you have a photo here that still shows three windows. So there's a conflict there. What does our inspection department do in that instance? I get that you talked about the pecking order, but if you're, somebody is submitting a site plan for a permit and there's a conflict, what does their staff do to address that?
Well, I don't know, but I can speak to all inspection staff. I'm sure that people handle it in different ways. Uh, but generally speaking, whatever is visually presented in our site plans is what we're responding to. Um, we get lots of documentations that have all these little sub-notes and footnotes and whatever. And not that we don't read those, of course, we're so, are important to the plan, but generally speaking, it's whatever is visually presented is what's getting looked at first and what's getting looked at for approval, because that's what we're scanning into our system as an approved document.
Is that the finding code, that you look at visual and not text, or is that just a practice?
Um, we look at text. We just, I'm saying that that's going to be obviously the first stop when you're looking at something that's a visual plan. And then additionally, not only because it has that in there, that note two says to remove, but I believe that there is a note seven that talks about repair. And that's where we're talking about, like, what supersedes what? Is that like a, a later number on a building plan supersedes anything cursory that comes before it? Because that's how they add the notes in.
And, and, you know, when I'm just looking at this, the location of two and seven. This is very small print. No, I'm trying to see where the location of seven is. See, so, so I'm seeing seven is pointing at a different location than where number two is. So we're talking about different things?
The copies that we have as an approved plan has notes two and seven related to those windows. So I don't know what you guys were presented in your packet, but the approved building plan has two and seven for the windows, two sane, replace, seven sane, repair.
Okay, I'll cross-reference in the, in the material. Thank you.
Number of things. First, do we want him just to replace the two windows with glass block, or do we also want him to bring back that third window?
All three repair, restored to glass block.
All three, okay, okay. Then, um, this started with, he wanted to do interior work, and there was nothing about windows in that plan?
No.
Okay, because windows would be considered exterior, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then the only other question I have is safety. If they are the, it sounds like they're the only windows in the room. Historically, I like the glass block, I, you know, I think that's, but if we're at a point where the glass block needs to be replaced, which sounds like it did, wouldn't safety override historical significance?
It would, um, but there are many points of egress in this home. So the glass block openings were not considered a point of egress, and the plans were still able to be approved. So there are plenty of other points of egress as far as fire safety is concerned.
If I could elaborate a little bit, just a tiny bit on that as well. Much of the purpose of the Landmarks Commission is so that there is some sort of public discussion about, you know, what's in the best interests of the community going forward with any plant changes to designated historic properties. In the case of this particular house, again, speaking conjecturally and in probable terms, the front picture window, probably, from an architectural history point of view, was once a series of operable windows. So that discussion, which never had an opportunity to take place, would have addressed issues like, if you want operable windows, let's talk about a better design solution for the historic integrity of this house than just jumping off and, you know, making these other historic glass block windows into something totally different now. So safety is very much a consideration, but the Landmarks Commission was never privy to that conversation because this never came to the Landmarks Commission until the job was done.
Okay, and staff, there was a mix-up. And he thought he had approval to go. We got the mix-up worked out, and then there were still miscommunications, it sounds like. It still seems like there was still some issues, because he still, still kept going. It didn't sound like he had the permit to do the windows, correct? Does that, I guess I don't know exactly the, the timeframe everything happened. I know the window frame, not the timeframe, everything exactly happened here.
Well, I asked you.
And you probably can't provide that.
Well, no, um, as Mr. Hickman stated, it was about the, it's the same process. So like, he applied, he received the initial permit sometime last fall. The completed one was submitted in October and approved in October with that expansion with the garage work being included. So that's where, from our standpoint and inspection standpoint, that was for interior work and the garage. So then come around to April, when I sent out my annual letter to all historic property owners, that's when he went, oh, I need to submit this application as well. At that same time, Jason had been doing a drive-through of Astor Park, noticed the work anyway because the trees had been taken down, the shrubbery that was in the front. So either way, a stop record was going to happen because we had not had a COA application for it.
Okay. And I just want to say, I got to get this off my chest. I'm finding this a real pain.
It wouldn't be a meeting without one pun, right?
Alder Morgan.
Alder Morgan.
Looking at the, what we have at exhibit six and exhibit seven, it shows pictures of the house with the glass block windows and in the, as it is today. I noticed that originally it had two separate garage doors with a separation between them. Now it has a modern garage door with the windows up on top, like only modern rooms do. How did that get to go through, yet these block windows were a problem?
The garage was approved by the Landmarks Commission because the permit had already been issued. So they realized that was a city error. I mean, I think you added a couple of comments in the staff report about the garage, but we mostly said, this is already a done deal. They received a permit for this work, that's our bad. So that's how the garage got done. They could have said, we don't care about the permit, we want, we want you to restore this how it should look. But the Landmarks Commission is actually very forgiving when it comes to this kind of stuff. They're very good at working with property owners on issues like this, so.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to turn it on? Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so I, for some of the information given, and I just wanted to clarify. So it says, was asked the question at the May meeting if the glass blocks were historic? And staff answered, no, they could not say that they were.
That's inaccurate.
Not true.
It's inaccurate, okay. And then question, as far as returning it back to the glass block, does it have to be glass block? Like they have to find specific glass block from the nineteen eighties from when that was considered? Because that's when it became on the historic list. So can they use new material?
You can use new material as long as it matches the design, color, texture, blah, blah, of the historic material. So I never had the opportunity to inspect that material up close, but from a distance, it appears to be a, a sort of glass block that is still available in some fashion or another. So it could be replaced with, with new material that looks like it did.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Alder Sawyer, yes.
Okay.
Just questions at this point, though, yes.
Thank you, Stephanie and Jason, for coming in. With this work that has been done, will this be considered a non-contributing property now or because of the changes?
No. Because typically that, that box is typically not revisited by the State Historic Preservation Office and the Department of the Interior. It is a negative impact to the integrity of the house. If we pursued that to get an answer, it's like a quantum thing. You don't know the answer until you measure it. So it will remain in a state of unansweredness until somebody pokes that.
We don't like to draw attention from the state office if we don't have.
And one other question. Is there a way to restore the glass block windows and the fenestration and wall around it to make it a relevant historic property again? I mean, can, now that the work has been done, it's altered things, can you reverse that trend and make it whole again, so to speak?
Certainly.
Yeah, and again, it's still considered contributing, but upon closer inspection, that might change at, you know, the state and federal level. It would be in keeping with the Secretary of the Interior Standards to insert new glass block material to maintain the integrity of design for the house. Because again, what's been done, there's, there's seven aspects of integrity. Removing the glass block and sealing it up, that dings the integrity of materials. And the integrity of the design, because the design involved three windows, not two. So returning that to a three-window house with a material that's identical in, in appearance to the historic material, yes, that's a vast improvement over what is currently present.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes, Alder Weary.
Thank you.
Thank you. I learned a lot here, just in this little half an hour, hour that we've been spending on international architecture. My, my quick Googling of international architecture with homes, and you can clearly see it, you know, block pattern, you know. But I, I do see on, on the hundreds of pictures I've seen on the international homes from around the world, the windows are vastly different. I, I haven't seen any glass block, there could be, I'm just, you know, going off what I did. But the windows, some have very little windows, some are all windows. But the one part that stays the same is the style, you know, the block kind of architecture, almost like playing with Legos. So that, I noticed that, right? I mean, you would say the overall style, regardless of the windows stayed intact. We didn't put a second floor on, anything like that.
Well, we, oh, sorry.
No.
So there are, I mean, there are a lot of different window types that go into different type of architectural styles. Like I also own an international home and mine always had operable double hungs. As far as the house has been constructed, it had those. However, it wouldn't be inappropriate for me to replace those with glass block because that's so, it's such a, a large piece of that style. But when we do the reviews as a staff to the commission and the commission making their decision, it's based off of the listing on the National Register. So just because other international styles don't have the glass block doesn't mean that it isn't important to that house.
Understand that.
Yeah, it's like some Queen Anne's don't have the turd and some do, so, you know, but you still have to like be respectful to the house on its own.
Wish we could get you a time machine and go back with him.
That would be nice.
Now, I noticed it says approximately the twenties it was built. So it could be the teens, could be the thirties, it was kind of a range, we don't know, or?
No, they're not that big a range.
Sometimes they are. We have certain bookends that we can use. We have a nineteen thirty-six Sanborn map that clearly shows the building present, so I know it was before nineteen thirty-six. We have the option of doing a deeper dive into the city directories, which are kind of year by year. I haven't done that for this property because it didn't seem to be warranted at this point. But I could look up that address year by year and identify when it disappears and when it appears. So for now, we know circa nineteen twenties is what appears in the National Register nomination from nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty. And for the purposes of the discussions we've been having at Landmarks Commission, there was no real benefit to refining that.
I appreciate it, I thank you. I also just did some quick Googling on the brief history of glass blocks. It's exciting reading. It looks like it was introduced in eighteen thirty-three and really started mass production after that. So if it was from the twenties, unless it was locally made, it's probably not. Two, that's why I was wondering if you put the dates together or not, but we don't have that exact date, so.
I would be happy to get into a fistfight with your reference there, but.
Internet's never wrong. All right, thank you.
Just one more question?
One more.
Oh, go ahead, you first.
Okay, and this one I meant to ask before, I forgot. In the brief from the city, we're, we're arguing claim preclusion based on the fact that this has really been adjudicated already through the Landmarks Commission. However, Stephanie, you mentioned that the code allows someone to bring it back. So I'm struggling to reconcile that.
The code is?
There might, that loophole may be, may exist there, right? But right now, it's there, it's permitted.
It's totally fair that he applied and that we heard the application, it got denied, the appeal is here. However, we believe that that is just, for lack of a better term, it's a loophole. Because we don't have it written into our preservation code that you can't reapply. Most of our other codes have that, like everything at the plant commission, there's a twelve-month window, or, yeah, twelve-month window where you can't reapply for the same application. Because it's deemed as, you know, there's no change to those projects, it's, or minor changes. It has to be a major change in order to be reapplied for, because it's just a duplicate issue. And then it stops us from being able to do any enforcement action on that. So if you can continue to reapply for COAs, it never gets to the point where I say, okay, now give me your timeline, how are you going to finish this? Like, do you need funding assistance? It just continues us in this loop with the applicant.
Right. Okay, so as it stands, though, right now, it's there.
He was definitely able to.
Yeah.
But the appeal window should have been used the first time.
Right, but most of our other codes would have that supreme. Claim preclusion would become kind of a moot point, but in this case, it's not because the code doesn't have that provision.
Yes, we'll be writing it in, but right now, it's allowed, but it's.
Okay, I just want to understand that, so, thank you.
This is relatable, but a little broader. I mean, the gentleman has spent a lot of money. And we certainly want people to be able to maintain and, and, and these homes. There is money available to help out with this, correct? How does that work into the process? Was he ever aware of that?
I'm sure, every letter we send out, I tell everyone how much money we have to give out. We have the revolving loan fund, which is a city-funded program that is offered to homeowners and to commercial businesses. And then the state and federal government both have tax credit programs and the state offers a residential one. So those are all available for any property owner who owns historic properties.
Do we have any other like, like grants or anything like that available?
I mean, our department always has a slew of grant funding available, but usually it's, you know, for specific populations, specific areas, that sort of thing. I don't think we have anything right now available for this type of work. However, it would have cost less to leave the windows in, in the first place, and get a permit and a COA.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions. At this point, if the appellant has any rebuttal arguments, they would be able to, to come forward now. If it's a new witness, we'll have to have you sworn in and there'll be a five-minute time limit, so. Clark, if you could swear in the next witness.
Okay, thank you. If you would just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I swear that the evidence and testimony I will give.
And testimony that I will give.
In this action.
In this action.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Steve Krieger, I'm from the law firm of Conway, Illinois, checking Jerry and represent the Herkmans related to this matter. So first of all, you know, I think you guys have done an awesome job asking questions and it's taken a lot of my points and just been able to cross them off because you've covered them up, so. I'll try to, I'll try to be quick here and just.
Because then she could see, feel better if you could see.
And.
Go ahead, yes, apologies, yes.
And push through some of these. Alder Johnson asked the question about claim preclusion, I think that's been clearly answered. There's a loophole here, there's a loophole, that's, you know, it's a flaw in the, in the, in the city's code. My client took advantage of it, that's, that shouldn't be to his detriment. Ultimately, what we're looking at here is my client submitted a plan to the city that was approved. He was granted a permit. He relied on that granting that permit to his detriment. Later found out that he needed to go through the Landmarks Commission. He understood that process, voluntarily came forward with that, once he learned of that. I will say that the plan that you guys all have in front of you, every window in this house was replaced. Shows on the plan, shows that it was done that way. The windows that are on that plan show that they were replaced and to be replaced. And that the third opening was to be shut. So that's, that's, it all shows on the plan, the permit was issued that way. The, the briefing that was done by the, by the staff is, is clear that the Landmarks Commission staff, you know, indicates that any permit issued without the certificate of appropriateness is not valid. But they fail to mention the fact that prior to that in the code, there's language that says, unless a COA has been granted, the development services manager shall not issue a permit. They did, they issued a permit. So another flaw in the, in the code there. Couple other quick points, when it comes to, really to the substantive argument here. Staff has mentioned that, that my client really beautified this home, put a lot of effort into it. Prior to this, the roof was caving in on this home. The glass blocks that have been the, the big subject of controversy were all cracked because of this. My client came in with the intention and spent a ton of money to try to make this house look better. And ultimately, you know, based on staff's, staff's own acknowledgement, he did that. If, I'd encourage you all, and I'm not going to go through it, but take a look at the code and reference the purpose of, of the Landmarks Commission. You know, a couple of things are to stabilize and improve property values, very clearly been done here. Improve and enhance the visual and aesthetic character of the city. I don't think there's any argument that what Mr. Herkman did, did that. There's also language that said, any application is to be approved unless the proposed work would detrimentally change, destroy or adversely affect any exterior feature of the improvement. I don't think we got that far. As it relates to the plan, the September twenty-ninth plan, again, shows that all the windows would be replaced. Shows that the one opening would be closed. So to say this permit was granted without that knowledge is, is just false. Staff, staff mentioned in their comments that, that these windows have a negative impact to the integrity of the house. Again, I would argue that so does a caved-in roof, so is broken windows. All of these things are detrimental to the value of the, of the house, detrimental to the tax value, or to the assessed value of the property. So there's, there's a lot of pieces here. And ultimately, the only thing that Mr. Herkman did was improve the value of this property. And I'd encourage you not to make it, you know, one of your constituents spend another twenty thousand-plus dollars to go backwards on this project.
Yes, question's Alder Burnett.
Yeah, sir, you had mentioned that the windows were cracked. Is that all of the windows in question or some?
So the, the glass blocks.
Yeah, the header had failed. Header failed over time and. If you look at it. Spent my life in construction, so I've seen much of it, but when they crack, and they, they don't crack in a straight line, okay? So they, they kind of fissure is what happens. And it's just, it's like any piece of engineering. Over time, it's going to fail, okay? Because of the stresses, expansion, there's lots of things going on. So they were, they were done. They were done. I can't add anything else.
One other question, and I'm not sure what you gentlemen will answer it. But at that point, when you realized the windows had the issue that you just explained, Mr. Herkman, what do you feel your options were at that time?
Well, I would have had, at that time, October of twenty-two, or before I got the permit, this had all been a conversation and, and we'd have worked through it. But they gave me a permit and they keep saying that I had a permit for a garage and blah, blah, blah. If you look at the plan, that's the plan that was submitted and the date on that plan is in September of twenty-two. I got the permit in October of twenty-two. They had the plan, okay? So it's, it's kind of kabuki, you know. And I, so I'm saying, I'm asking for the relief based on my petition, the plan, the end result, and the fact that all the work had been done. It was done over the winter and inspected. And as far as grandfather, again, if we'd have been talking about grandfathering in September of twenty-two, that may have had some reason to it, reasonableness, you know. I'm a reasonable person.
Thank you for that. I'm just, I'm not trying to lead you to the answer, but I'm just trying to understand your reasoning up until that point. So if you notice there are cracks in the window or that there were issues that needed to be addressed, do you feel like you could have just ignored it and not replaced?
Oh, no, no, the header was busted. I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't want to spend the money. The contractor, when he took the dry, the plaster off, he says, this all has to change.
Okay, that's all.
And then, and then structurally, Eric from the city, you know, who has, I mean, he studied architecture. You remember, it's Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Milwaukee. I mean, he's there. And he's there often.
That's all, you answered, thank you, sir.
I have a question. So if, if we'd had that discussion, if we could have had that discussion at the appropriate time and Landmarks Commission would have said, you have to keep the three windows, they have to be block windows, your response would have been?
My response would have been, there is only one place to put the staircase. Because the other staircase that was in the house wasn't wide enough. It wouldn't meet, you couldn't get downstairs or out of the basement. So, and that had failed structurally also. And that, because of the, that's, that's the only place they could put the staircase, was right there. And in order, the wisdom was, we're going to have to have a railing. And that railing, as in the picture, ties right into where that window was. So the plan, yeah, so the plan says. So, the plan, yeah, so the plan says, we're going to take that opening out and we're going to stucco it to match the building. And so, when they're going to do that, I can't match a stucco. So, I'd say stuck in a house, stucco, because it's cracking anyhow. So, that's what happened and
The other two windows could have stayed glass block?
Could they have stayed at, in, in September of '22? Yeah, because I could have built the header different. I could have built the whole constructed, the wall different. But the, the third window was going to be gone regardless. That was going to be gone. I've taken up an awful lot of your time.
No, it's all right.
I apologize. It's taking a lot of my time too, boy, I'll tell you.
All right, thank you both. If there's no other questions, then we can kick it back to city staff for any rebuttal, for any rebuttal comments. Clerk, we'll have to square in Attorney Wood.
If you'd just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I swear
I swear.
That the evidence and testimony
That the evidence and testimony
I will give in this action
I will
Give in this action
Give in this action.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth. Thank you. At issue here is just one window. We're talking about one glass block window that was designated back in the eighties as historical to the property. So, I think there's a clear solution here. It's just that fix that one window. That's the only window that we're really talking about here. It's the only thing that's at issue. I'd like to point out that the COA letters that the, the appellant is talking about are sent out every year. So, not just last year, but the year before, the year before that as well. He has two properties in this district. They're both historical and he's aware of how this process works, I believe. The Landmarks Commission did consider the issue about these three windows and they were clear that one of the conditions should be that the windows be restored. And I think that's important here and probably the most important point here is that after that condition was placed and that the COA was partially granted, the appellant here has admitted that he knew he had 30 days to appeal his decision and he chose not to appeal that decision. Now, he's retained counsel to tell you that it's okay that there's loopholes and these loopholes should be exploited and that you should recognize that and accept that. I don't believe that that's how our ordinance works. In fact, I know that's not how our ordinances work. So, I would propose that the solution here should be that the one window should be restored to its original condition. Thank you for your time.
Are we talking three windows?
Yeah, three.
So, there are three windows. I believe that there are two that currently exist and that one was stuccoed over.
Right, but I thought, don't we want the other two glass blocked up again?
We, yes, that's correct and I
So, it would be three windows?
It would be the three windows. My understanding was that it was just the one that was different.
Right, windows.
Thank you.
Yes, Alder Burnett?
Thank you, attorney. You said that to have the window, window restored, windows restored. From a city's standpoint or position, what would restore mean exactly?
Yeah, I believe that that would have to probably go through working with the Landmarks Commission. I, I believe that, well, I'm, I'm more of the lawyer here. I don't know exactly how the architecture would have to all look. But basically, what I've heard from Jason even tonight is that it could be with materials that are from today that would have fit the character as it was at least back in 1980 when it was brought on as a historical structure. So, you know, you could ask them for more specifics about what exactly that would look like, but my understanding is that it wouldn't be all that burdensome to go back to the way that it was.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Wood.
Yeah.
Yes, Alder Weary.
Thank you, attorney. Thank you. I have a question. Does, does the city admit that the plans submitted dated September 29th of 2022 and the permit that was issued in October of 2022? That's what we went off initially because if so, it's stuck going over a window.
Yeah, and I would prefer, I, I could consult with the staff more specifically, but I think to answer that question, we really can look back to just what the Landmarks Commission looked at. They took in all of this information. There was a lot of stuff going on here. And at the end of the day, the Landmarks Commission made the condition that the three windows remain there. So, I understand that maybe there's some differing opinions about what the point was, but the Landmarks Commission made that determination.
And it sounds like we missed it initially and we fixed it since then, but if we would have caught it initially, would have saved a lot of time and hassle and money spent on, on all parts. Thanks.
Yes, Alder Johnson?
Yeah, just one more question related to the claim preclusion. If this were in front of a, if this were a civil case and, and an attorney argued that because of the absence in our code of the ability to appeal this again, how would a civil attorney rule on that? Would they say that Mr. Hirkman is within his rights to still file an appeal? Is there case law to kind of defend the absence of, you know, that, that code?
Are you asking me for what a judge was there or what an attorney would say?
Well, I know what an attorney would say. I've heard both attorneys. I'm just curious what a judge would say, right? It's not, it, it doesn't say in our code that you can't bring it forward again. And that's what Mr. Hirkman chose to do. So, if this were in front of a civil judge, I presume a civil judge would say that claim preclusion is not, not a relevant argument, right? I mean, am I, am I not interpreting something here?
I would have a different opinion, yes. And I think the judge would find that it went before a proper body that was recognized by the common council to, to hear these determinations. The Landmarks Commission made that determination and now you have someone who was trying to, they, they did not appeal. They admit that they did not appeal and now they're saying, actually, I do want to appeal. I'm just going to do it in a different way. That's the same exact issue. Claim preclusion has the same facts, the same parties, and the same result and that it should be denied.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Alder Scannell?
I would like to hear from the Landmarks, someone from the Landmarks Commission as to why, I mean, it seems like practically, there was a sound reason, it appears, to wall up that, you know, to put in that railing and that, that sounds reasonable, practical, practically even, necessary, even almost given the, I'd like to know why the Landmarks Commission did, what's their argument? Why did they think that was not a logical thing to do?
It's not a question for the attorney?
I don't think so. I don't think he can answer.
Okay. So, if no more questions for Attorney Wood, then we can bring up staff to, for, for the remainder of the rebuttal period.
Can I do one question?
Oh, okay. Alder X.
Okay. Just a quick question. So, does the 30-day lapsing, in your opinion, automatically deserve denial?
I believe that it does, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions for Attorney Wood, we can return it back to staff for the remainder of the rebuttal to, to answer any additional questions or make any additional arguments. Ask again.
So, the Landmarks Commission has decided that third window should not have been removed, that it needs to come back. But listening to the plaintiff, giving his reasons on why he took it out, I mean, it wasn't capricious, it wasn't, you know, why did the landmark decision disagree or how did you come to your decision that that window should be there and that that railing shouldn't be there, though structurally, what he was addressing isn't important or should have been done some other way or what I, what was the Landmarks reasoning in?
I think I have two answers for that. So, the first was that we were not given any information about the windows. So, even them saying they were beyond repair, they were deteriorated, we didn't get any of that. It was requested as part of the COA application. We did not receive that. So, we did not even receive the, well, we're putting a railing here and that's why this, you know, we didn't get any of that information. So, that wasn't even able to be discussed by the Landmarks Commission. Second to that, we look at the exterior of the home. So, how the floor, like, how the house functions inside is obviously important to exterior architecture sometimes, but a house that's been functioning for 100 years, the way it was built, can definitely find a way to function that way still. So, not only were we not presented that information, it was not, it's not part of our review process necessarily. If it were something that were, again, UDC required, life safety requirement, you know, there are a lot of things like jump porches that we approved because they're part of our building code that maybe aren't historically accurate, right? These little porches, those, those weren't always on the houses. But those are things that we noticed that are needed in a modern society. Taking out a window that didn't need to be taken out, you know, railing could have been added elsewhere, it could have been designed differently. There are a lot of different options that homeowners have when it comes to the layout of their home. But at a minimum, they're required to provide us information so we can make those decisions at a committee level and that wasn't done.
Okay. And then, just a clarification, I think I remember, it sounds like there's plans you viewed, may not be the plans we have here.
I don't know what's in your hands, so I'm not sure. What we did though is we had the, the plans that were submitted as part of, thank you, part of our building plan review process, which I think are these. I printed it out at the Landmarks Commission meeting. I said it shows all three windows. Mr. Hirkman said, yes, it does. That was all on the record if anyone watched the meeting from May. So, we, we pulled whatever inspection had. We didn't get these separate in our COA application. This is not, oh, wait. This is not the same plan that I have.
But this is the plan that he got his permit for, correct?
I don't see an approved stamp on here. The one that we have been reviewing and discussing on page A2 dot 1 has a different note seven than what is shown on the one that was submitted to you. So, this is not the approved building plan.
And that's attached?
So, what, and where did you get your plan? Was that the plan, which plan did he get the permit from?
The building permit inspection one that I pulled right from our resources upstairs. That's what we have been using. That's what I printed during the meeting. That's what we've been using. That's what was presented to us, right? Because that's the note page.
Is that attached to our, because we've got the plan on here, but that's the same as that one?
This is not approved plan, correct?
No, looking at this now, this is not the one that is approved. It must have been the one.
Right. But he said it's the one, he said what?
It may be. So, on page C1 dot 1?
Yep. So, this is correct and if you look at, on page C1 dot 1, note 2, remove the window, note 7, repair. And if you look at the revision triangles in the, it looks like it's almost labeled lot 9, you'll see a little, little triangle number 7 and a little triangle number 2 and they're both pointing to that same missing third window, which is clearly shown here on every page of this plan. So, as a, as a licensed professional engineer now speaking at you, I would say note 7 supersedes note 2. And by the way, proper drawing practice would be to actually delete the image of the window in every one of these views and that wasn't done. So, you have internal inconsistencies here, which as a professional engineer reading them, I would say, well, shame on that person. But I look at page A2 dot 1, south elevation, three windows clearly shown everywhere in this drawing. So, as an engineer, note 2 appears to be an error. The property owner's saying note 2 takes precedence over everything, over every drawing, every visual image, and over note 7, which came later but shouldn't have come later.
Right there. Oh, okay. I thought it was showing the previous.
Excuse me, Mr. Flat and, and Ms. Hummel, these plans were these plans, the ones that were submitted to Landmarks Commission and part of their report at that Landmarks Commission meeting in May?
In May, yes.
Yes. So, I would advise counsel, if you want to consider this as evidence, because it wasn't presented as part of the packet for this evening and wasn't entered as evidence, for someone to move to enter the land, or the Landmarks Commission, I'm sorry?
I believe that this was submitted by the
It's the same as the attachment that was submitted by the appellant?
Yeah, we did not.
I just want to make sure that we have the evidence in the record.
It is on the, it's the same as the attachment.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that it is in evidence for counsel.
We did not submit any building plans as part of our exhibits. So, these were just provided by the applicant.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Alder Morgan?
In our sworn testimony tonight, we were told that, I may not be stating this exact, but they received something from the city after this 30-day notice or 30-day timeline had expired, asking them if they were going to appeal. Is this something normal or, like, I mean, that's definitely confusing to them that it was after, they're saying it was after the 30-day
It was, we sent an official COA after the Landmarks Commission meeting that details what decisions were made and then the appeal process. So, that would have been mailed and emailed to the applicant and then via email is when he said, can't you just reconsider it? And that's when I reiterated, no, there's an appeal process. So, we did not ask or recommend an appeal after that 30-day window. From my knowledge, it wasn't discussed again after that.
There was testimony though that they received something from the city after this timeline.
It could be the appeal for this one, because this was a separate COA application. So, the initial one was from May. There was an additional COA in July that wasn't related to the windows. And then, this one that is being appealed now from September. So, there have been plenty of correspondences between us all since April.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do, does counsel have any additional questions for any other parties, for either of the parties before we close testimony on the matter?
I'd like to know where this came from.
Came from Mr. Hirkman.
Right.
Doesn't it look like it before?
It's his plan.
Was this presented by Mr. Hirkman to counsel this evening, but not part of the packet?
Yes.
It's, but it's the same one that's in the packet for you?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Then, then we're clear. I just want to make sure, because if it was a different version, then we would have to separately add it in. Correct, all right. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. We can then close testimony on the matter. And at this point, we would be moving into deliberations, so So, at this point, we would entertain for one of the Alders to read the closed session language so that we can go into deliberation.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Yep.
The counsel may convene in closed session pursuant to section 19.85, subsection 1, subsection A, Wisconsin statute, for purpose of deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial, quasi-judicial trial or hearing before that governmental body, the counsel thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.5, subsection 2, Wisconsin statute, to take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Second.
Alder Johnson makes that motion and was seconded by Alder X. Any discussion?
I do, Mayor.
Alder Burnett?
Mayor, just for public knowledge, are you going to be joining, joining us into closed session?
I will be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, we'll use the board on that motion.
You may vote.
I would think we could. I was going to bring an
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, mine's not coming up.
Alder Scannell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, that is, that passes 12-0.
Entertain a motion to return to regular order of business. Moved by
Alder Galvin and Alder Johnson, respectively.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. We're back in regular order of business. Entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to hold this appeal for further consideration at the November 7th, 2023 Common Council meeting. The parties are directed to submit a written brief, not to exceed three pages, on the issue of whether the windows as removed or replaced qualify for certificate of appropriateness pursuant to section 44-1, 552, subsection 2, subsection B of the Green Bay Municipal Code. Briefs must be submitted to the clerk by close of business Wednesday, November 1st, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. On to report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion?
Congrats.
Yes, well done.
Uh, number one.
Number one, any others?
Oh, come on, that's what we're here for.
Hearing none others? Uh, all in favor of the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the report is going to approve the exception of item one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Seconded by Alder X.
Seconded by Alder X, the item was pulled by Alder Johnson, I believe.
Yeah, I would just make a, uh, make a motion to amend item one, um, to have it read, uh, to, to eliminate, draft a resolution, just, just have it read, to direct staff to send a letter of appeal.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Galvin. Uh, any, uh, any comments on that, Director Grenier?
Just direct draft a resolution, that's it.
No comments.
I have a comment.
Okay. Uh, Alder X?
Okay, well, I just, the reason why we did that at committee was because we were, um, directed to do it by Director Grenier, so I'm just wondering what the reason for the change on that is.
The discussion at committee was to have the council support this, and the only way to do that was by resolution. If you want staff just to send the letter, staff can do that, but it won't say on behalf of the Common Council. I can't do that unless you guys pass a resolution. That's why the resolution was first brought up.
Okay. I guess wondering, where's, why are we changing that?
To expedite the process. But, look, that's my amendment, you can vote it up or down.
All right, Alder Johnson has an amendment, there's a second, um, and remember to use the buttons. Uh, I do see Alder Burnett, however.
There's Alder Johnson, I'm sorry, Alders Burnett and Story would like to speak.
Sorry, Mayor, my, uh, I couldn't click request speak for some reason.
That's okay.
I, I appreciate what Alder Johnson's doing it from a timeliness perspective, um, having the full weight of the council, or at least having a vote of the council kind of legitimate, legit, I'm not even going to try to say the word.
It legitimizes the issue much more, I don't want to say forcefully, but formally, having a letter submitted by the Public Works Department, although I trust them to do that, uh, I think that, uh, a weight, a full weight of a letter or resolution by the council carries more.
And if you've heard the testimony of the folks up and down Country Club, if there is a possibility that we simply remove sidewalks on one side of the road, still have sidewalks on the, on the NWTC side of the road, that will allow pedestrian traffic and potentially save residents with very long linear frontage, possibly thousands of dollars of having to pay for assessments for sidewalks that they don't want, and in some cases can't physically maintain. That entire neighborhood does not have sidewalks. I live in that neighborhood, so I'm very familiar with it. It would literally be the only part of that entire multiple subdivision neighborhood with sidewalks, and it just doesn't make sense. So I appreciate what Alder Johnson's doing from a timeliness, I would just urge the council to vote this particular motion down.
It's Alder, Alder Story?
Your Honor, I agree with Alder Burnett. We spoke at this at quite a length at the meeting, INS meeting, and, uh, Director Grenier brought up some very good reasons why, you know, I think part of the, part of this deal is that it's like all or nothing. You know, we, so can we do a little of this or a little of that, you know, but the, the way things were set, it's just more difficult to go that route. But I, I agree with Alder Burnett, I think we should move forward with the resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Johnson.
I just want to be clear, I, I'm not objecting to the appeal process. This is just the resolution. It's kind of unnecessary. I mean, we can do it, doesn't hurt anything, but at the same time, I'm expediting it, so my point is, like, I, I'm not, I don't think we need to get into discussion about the merits of sidewalks on one side or the other side, it's literally just this piece. And again, if the majority of council doesn't support it, that's fine, but I just, I, I don't want to belabor this point, so, we, we belabored other points.
Thanks, Alder.
Stop belaboring.
All right, all in favor of Alder Johnson amendment, Alder Johnson's amendment will signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Close nay?
What?
Uh, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it.
I told you.
You had to change your. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder X. Um, just to, you know, unfortunately to belabor maybe just for a little bit, uh, Director Grenier, I don't know, I'm assuming you probably don't have the safe walk and bike plan at your fingertips, but i- if you did, or if you recollected, was curious what it calls for on this stretch?
I do, I do believe it calls for sidewalks both sides.
You do believe it calls for sidewalks on both sides?
I do believe that it does.
Calls for sidewalks both sides.
Okay. Thank you, Director. All right, any, uh, further commentary on this?
I, I can't find the button to speak here.
Alder Galvin would like to speak here.
Alder Galvin, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I was a resident of that neighborhood for, uh, quite a few years, and, uh, had my children up and down, uh, I used to, uh, jog quite a bit, and, uh, I get it, nobody wants to shovel their sidewalk, nobody wants to pay for a sidewalk to have it installed. Um, it'd be nice that when we're doing these new subdivisions, if we'd follow the ordinance and just put the sidewalks in right away, and save all this later on. But, uh, because people think it's too expensive, what's the value of a life of a child that gets hit by a car? Um, or it's too onerous to get out and shovel the sidewalk. Well, there's quite a few other residents within this city that every winter, they're shoveling their sidewalks, and, uh, I don't think it's that big of a deal. Um, you know, you want to live in a nice city, you should provide sidewalks for pedestrians and people to get out and be able to safely move about their community. Um, and that's why I voted in favor of not having the resolution. And now that I find out that this is a safe route to school, what are we going to be complaining when the kids are walking to school? And they're, they're the victim of some, some motorists? Oh, we should have had sidewalks. Well, the city council voted against it, so we could save people a few bucks and a little time shoveling their walks. Um, you know, it seems like a nice thing to do for people until someone suffers the consequences of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Galvin. Uh, Alder Burnett?
Yeah, well, I can appreciate that, and perhaps the pedestrian study that we did included sidewalks, but that's just suggestion, it's not ironclad. I personally live in that neighborhood, I walk that route, my children, you know, ride bikes there and walk, and I, of course, am concerned about the safety of bicyclists, pedestrians. But in this particular stretch, um, we're not eliminating sidewalks on both sides, we're putting sidewalks on one side, and it would be a six-foot sidewalk on the NWTC side, and some of the arguments are that this, the stretch of street will have additional pedestrian traffic, and I just don't see it that you need to justify sidewalks on both sides of the street, on a stretch of road where there are literally no connections to any sidewalks. So we're going to implement sidewalks on one side, or in this case, two sides of the road, um, to, and again, the issue isn't that we're rejecting the, the sidewalks, we're saying to the state or federal government, whatever, I think it's the Wisconsin DOT, the committee, please consider removing sidewalks from one side. It doesn't mean they're going to. I think the issue in this case, I don't know if Alder Galvin watched the committee, but we are getting federal funds as distributed to our state government. They require sidewalks as part of the design, and this is just simply saying reconsider that, put sidewalks on one side of the road. On the other side, and this is the other issue too, is that on the other side, the plan calls for five-foot sidewalks, where perhaps three-foot sidewalks would be a better option, or at least more affordable. I live there, I drive there, I walk that route, to think that we're going to have a significant increase of pedestrian traffic on both sides of the side on the street, it just doesn't make sense to me. So, this is just having the letter and resolution drafted for consideration, the state can go through this process, and they say, well, too bad, we're going to force you to put sidewalks in, then, then that's the, that's the answer, but at least we tried. So, I'm in support of the, the motion to send a letter and draft a resolution for consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't have a button here neither, but we, we did, we did discuss this, uh, quite a bit with the neighbors there, and, uh, one lady had a hundred and fifty-six feet, and the, the plan is that they only have three feet between the sidewalk and the street. And, uh, I mean, I got eighteen inches and a five-foot sidewalk, and when the snowplow comes by, my hundred and fifty feet, it's totally over the sidewalk, and that's a pretty, pretty busy street, pretty wide street, so there's a lot of snow. Furthermore, down the street further, uh, Oneida Tribe owns a bunch of property, and it stops right there, so that whole side of that street just stops and goes nowhere. So those people are going to have to figure out how to get back across that street to get to those lower streets in those neighborhoods. As some of the people said, she sits in her kitchen all day long, if I see four people walk down that sidewalk, or walk down the street, that's it, in a day. They've lived there for fifty or sixty years. Um, I think one side is surfacible here. I know we're given a, possibly the chance to get more support from, I thought it was a federal, federal grant, not a state grant. Um, but I'm in favor for, uh, at least giving an effort, and having, uh, Director Grenier, uh, with his behalf, and the backing of our, uh, city council in favor of at least a request kind of sets precedent to why something like this has to be like this. I mean, there's not even sidewalks on Highway fifty-four, so where are they going to go when they get there? Are we going to put crossing lights there? Are we going to put buttons there? That's all I have.
All right. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The ayes have it, and that item is approved. On to protection and policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor, the report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Protection and policy granting operative licenses.
Second.
Motion, motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder X. Any names to be handled separately or extensions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it. Plan commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Uh, items here to be handled separately?
Yes, I, um, need to pull item one, and because of item two refers to item one, I have to pull item two also. I have two people here waiting to talk.
All right. Items one and two. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of the remainder of that, yep?
I, uh, Alder Johnson here, just need to note an extension on item three.
Very good. Thank you, Alder. Um, all in favor of the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of items one and two. On item one, the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin, the item was pulled by Alder Hutchison.
Um, this item has to do with, uh, rezoning a small parcel within a larger parcel. I have a representative of the developer here, and a representative from the Neighborhood Association, so I'd like to, um, make a motion to open the floor.
Second.
Alder Hutchison makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Campbell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it, the floor is open. Uh, please just approach the podium, state your name and address for the council.
Hi, good evening, my name is Joel Erfreth, I'm with Mach Four Engineering, we're representing the developer tonight. Um, just a real brief background on the property that in question, this is on Finger Road.
Your address?
Uh, twenty-two sixty Sault Schrader Court. Um, this is on, on Finger Road, it, it's one continuous piece of property right now, or one solid, or whole piece of property. Um, back in twenty twenty-two, we brought forth a rezoning petition to rezone it to C one. C one was chosen because the twenty, the city's smart growth plan recommended commercial use for that parcel. And, um, city staff concurred with that, with the exception that they wanted a two-hundred foot strip to remain R three. That's how it went to the plan commission. The plan commission chose to take that two-hundred foot strip and make it OR, or Office Residential Zoning. Both are somewhat unique in that you typically don't want two zoning districts on one parcel. In fact, I, I would almost be willing to argue the city prohibits that. Fast forward to today, we, we have a CSM forward to divide that into four commercial parcels, and two site plans in, actually two uses on them, but I have two different zoning. And I can't get a site plan approved because I have two different zoning that the city requires us to do. And interestingly enough, I can put both uses in either zoning district, I just can't put them across two zoning districts. And one of the gentlemen named at the plan commission, I think even used the terminology, we got to fix this mistake. And so what, you know, what we, we were proposing is C one, which was the, the bulk, the bulk of the property is zone C one. Um, OR is Office Residential, which, you know, quoting from your city codes, is a transitional mixed-use district intended for edges of downtown or segments of commercial corridors, where there's some development pressure to convert residential uses, or residential uses to offices. Out on Finger Road, I, I don't, um, one, we're not, you know, it's, it's quite a ways from downtown, and two, I don't think that pressure is there. So that's why we're, we're petitioning to see if we could have the whole thing zoned C one. And again, both, what we're proposing are fairly benign uses, both permitted allowable uses in a, in both districts, it's just I can't do it in two districts.
Very good. Thanks so much for your testimony, sir. Any questions for our guest?
Um, just briefly, what are the two, there's two out of the four lots, there's proposed, uh, activity. What are those two proposed activities?
One is a dental, uh, clinic, uh, like a specialty dental clinic, and the other is a daycare.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Yeah, we got one more.
Okay.
Uh, John Crabbe, five-zero-five Larry Lane, uh, I represent the, uh, McColl Park Neighborhood Association. Um, ju- just to be clear, for the most part, nobody's against any development in the area. Uh, the biggest concern is Finger Road, and that stretch of finger between Ontario and Huron is covered on either side, you know, smaller two-lane road. Um, you know, so you're looking at developing an area and bringing traffic down there. Uh, just to quote something that was, uh, given by, uh, Mach Four, uh, "Traffic to the south side of East Mason Street cross into parcel twenty-one dash one-seven-three from East Mason Street is prohibited. The fact indicates city planners and engineering departments intended Finger Road to be used as a higher volume roadway." At the committee meeting, um, it was the city, uh, school district, uh, Safe Walk, uh, Bike Pedestrian Plan was cited. What I can see is that plan was, uh, from twenty nineteen. If this development is from the city's smart growth from twenty twenty-two, that's a three-year difference. Is there, you know, the question is, you know, can you really look at a, start three years when things are moving pretty fast, and to sit there and just say, the road is safe, everything's fine, and we're just going to move on? When people in the neighborhood are seeing, are going to see increased traffic, they're going to see, uh, you know, it doesn't matter what gets developed, their traffic is going to increase. Is there, you know, the question is, you know, can you really look at a study of three years when things are moving pretty fast and to sit there and just say, the road is safe, everything's fine, and we're just gonna move on? When people in the neighborhood are seeing, are gonna see increased traffic, they're gonna see, you know, it doesn't matter what gets developed, their traffic is gonna increase. And that's gonna, that's the biggest concern, that even though it's a daycare and a dental office that's being talked about right now, the concern is that, you know, once development starts, it's gonna go pretty fast, and at that point, when does the road get addressed? When does the traffic start getting addressed? And, you know, people are gonna be, you know, seeing issues that they see now, I mean, there's a lot of things that aren't documented, like close calls and things like that, just because, you know, never, you know, happened to an accident. But, you know, there's a lot of people that would be able to testify that, you know, they've experienced something in some form, so, you know, start development there, and then you go back to fixed road, and now you're bringing in all that traffic that, you know, whatever's put there is basically to draw from the industrial part, and all that's gonna be coming in. So that, that's the biggest concerns from the neighborhood, is that the street needs to be addressed, and probably more sooner than later. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, any questions for our guest?
Alder Storey.
Go ahead.
Thanks for coming in. So you said you're not against development, and I understand, you made some good testimony on that, but I'm just wondering, do you have any thoughts or ideas? I mean, it's a fairly nice piece of land there, what, what you would see as being amenable in that area? Is there any, any ideas for that, or are you just keeping vacant, or?
No, I, I get the gist that, you know, it's gonna be developed. The, the issue is, is that the plan is saying that you can't access off of Mason Street. He couldn't put a driveway in to Mason Street to access. So you can't bring the traffic off of Mason Street, it's gotta come down Finger. So it's either kinda coming off of Ontario or off of Huron into that area. Welland comes in, and there's a lot of people that leave the neighborhood off of Welland, and that's where the issue is. And now you're, you know, you start bringing in traffic across from that development, trying to get out, and that's where the concerns are.
I haven't looked at it long enough, because I know Mason's very busy along that stretch, and I, I might ask our staff about that after we're done here, why, why that doesn't happen. If that did happen, you'd be a little more amenable to that? You know, if somehow you could get a driveway off of Mason, you'd be better with that?
I, I think for the most part, yeah.
All right, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
I make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
Alder Hutchison makes motion to close the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, we're on item one, motion to approve. Any discussion?
I'd just like to have Director Gurneer just discuss the fact of what the Public Works is planning in that area and what testimony he gave at the committee level on this.
All right, Director Gurneer?
Well, absen, excuse me, absent any development out here, this segment of Finger Road is currently rated a three on the Pazer scale, and it's a high three, meaning that there are a number of other threes that would qualify for resurfacing or reconstruction well ahead of this. This one's not on our radar. So absent any development, it's gonna be at least 15 years before we look at any improvements on this segment of Finger Road. With additional development, if that does generate additional traffic volumes that would constitute a reason for us to reconsider moving that up in the order, we reconsider our program every year. So we'll monitor what the traffic looks like out there, and if there seems to be an overriding concern that would cause, that, that would come up, that would cause us to reconsider advancing that street, we would take that as just our normal order of business.
Okay, and I, it was my understanding, the fact that this development is occurring would absolutely make you aware that there probably is gonna have to be something done with that road?
Absolutely, it puts it on our radar. I can't guarantee when that would happen, but it would definitely put it on our radar. The fact that development is occurring out here would be the reason for us to take a second look at it, to see if it would warrant moving up in the, in the priority order.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Morgan is on.
Is there an ordinance that no driveways can be attached from Mason Street?
That was in the, the no, limited access off of East Mason was due to the conversion of East Mason Street as a county trunk highway. If you look at Welland Extended, where Welland crosses this parcel and comes out to Mason Street, there is a cut in Mason Street accommodating a potential future street. But that would be a street that comes off, not a driveway. County does not allow any driveways directly onto Mason from I-43 out. All of it's limited access off-site streets only.
Thank you, that answers it.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, item one is approved. Onto two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alder Hutchison, seconded by Alder Scannell. That was pulled by Alder Hutchison, you have the floor.
Item two just follows after the approval of item one, so it just makes sense to do item two if we approve item one.
Very good, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that item is approved. Finance committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that report is approved. Park committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately?
Four.
Item four, any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item four.
Motion to approve, item four.
Second.
Motion to approve, item four, was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, I, I spoke with Director Ditchite about this, and I broadly agree with the, the arguments that were made about denying it, and, and I really have no objection to that. You know, the discussion I had with, with Director Ditchite is, is we talk about, this goes back to a motion I made, I don't know, a year ago maybe, which was for the creation of a comprehensive waterfront development strategy. Because what this suggests or proposes is that a pier exists there right now, therefore we have to replace it with a pier. And I don't know that it necessarily has to go that way. And, and so I don't know what the alternative is, but I think for us to be able to engage the neighborhood, and, and quite frankly, this is the equivalent of a trailhead of the Fox River Trail, so many cars park in that area. You know, so for us to engage even the community conceptually around what this site could look like, and I don't remember the exact verbiage at the time, but I believe there was a directive for, for Community Economic Development Department, so Director Gurneer Wig, I know you, you weren't director at that time, but to engage in discussions around some of those other parcels along that stretch, I, based on your reaction to that, I'm assuming nothing's happened with it, and I get it, there was a transition, but I, but I think we need to revisit that discussion, and I can do that offline with you. But I think we need to re-just, reengage on that discussion, because I think it could open up the playbook. Right now, we have just a small little slice there. I think if, if some things changed, you could have a lot more opportunity for us to really activate the waterfront in a more meaningful way for that neighborhood. And so I, I, well, again, I agree with the motion, I at least wanted to publicly acknowledge that I think we need to do something there eventually, but I think this is putting the cart before the horse. And, and I do, you know, want us to, again, work with the neighborhood on, on some concepts that could, sky's the limit, kind of thing, right? But also pursue that previous motion that had been made and that council supported, that I'm not sure if any, any wheels have moved on it. Okay, so again, we'll connect on that offline, I don't need to modify this to do anything, but I'll just know that we're gonna do that, based on this discussion, so. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Alder. The, the motion to, was to approve, was that to approve the denial essentially, or do you wanna make a different motion?
No, 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 that, yeah, to approve the denial, I support that.
Okay, very good. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that item is dispensed with personnel committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Item's here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. PAC?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion to approve by Alder Scannell, that was seconded by?
Galvin.
Alder, Alder Galvin, item's here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Informational items, building report, and municipal court report for 2023 in the packet. Resolutions?
I could, I could point a border real quick.
Yes.
Alder Bunnett.
Mayor, I, I, there were some folks who wanted to speak on the personnel agenda item, and I, do you wanna speak? I think fluffy. You don't wanna speak on that? Okay, I, I apologize, I just didn't want it to be overlooked.
Nope, that's okay, thanks for pausing for us. Under resolutions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one rule called vote has been made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Storey. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by whom? By Weary. Any discussion?
Mayor, Alder Johnson here, I just need to be recorded as abstaining on item one, it is tied to the plan commission.
Okay, very good, that will be noted. Seeing no other discussion, we will use the board.
Just give me a moment. You made up.
You can put me on as a yes, please.
Same, Alder Campbell, yes.
Thank you, that passes 12-0.
All right, thank you, clerk, on to ordinances for street.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Motion to advance, was by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin?
Johnson.
Johnson. Any commentary? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that's advanced petitions and communications. Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned, thanks everyone, have a good one.